All right. Does everyone hear set? Ed, good. Okay. Ron? Okay. Hello, good evening. Is that working? Yes. Testing. I'm coming through on the vet. Yes? Okay, it sounded different. We're going to begin the Board of Selectmen meeting. Thank you all for coming. If you can't find a chair, there are more chairs just behind that green curtain. So help yourself and put them wherever you wish. If you would join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. We have two public hearings to start the meeting with, and since those are posted for a certain time in our agenda, I'm going to open with those two public hearings, and then we'll circle back for public comment. Okay, thank you. So the first public hearing, I'm going to read it. The Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass., on the application for an off-premises package store wine and malt license for Merrymart Inc., DBA Merrymart, 931 Salem Street, Groveland, Massachusetts, 01834. Meredith Buckley is the proposed manager. I think in your package you have all the license information for this one, and I think the applicant is present. Thank you. Would you like to come up and speak or say anything? You can use the podium and the microphone right there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. My name is Brian Chase, I'm an attorney in Haverhill. I represent Merrymart Inc. With me are Fadi Isa and Meredith Buckley, they are the owners of the company. Ms. Buckley is going to be the manager of the store. Mr. Isa owns the corporation. You have before you a package of materials with the application and all of the supporting data, relative information. I can tell you, just to the extent that I do this for the city of Methuen, the licensing chair, the things that I look for, the tip certification. This is a beer and wine application. They're going to be running a convenience store and a gas station on Salem Street. The store's going to be opening, targeting November, might be as late as December, depending on how construction goes. If you've driven by the site, it's a work in progress. The insurance is in place for the facility. You'll see the application that will go before the ABCC if we're fortunate enough to have your approval. You will see that there is a lease with the property owner, which is, which is Mr. Isa here. Mr. Isa has lived in Groveland since, let's see, almost 20 years, since '05. He's a former volunteer firefighter here for 13 years. His wife, Ms. Buckley, is 14 years as a teacher in the city of Lynn. She knows how to say no to underage people. That's her business. She's undergone the training. They are responsible business owners. They've submitted all of the necessary Corey requests. They have paid the necessary fees to the state, and they are looking for your approval this evening. And they're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. First, I'll open it up. Is there anyone from the public that has any questions? No, okay. I see you notified all the abutters, so if they wanted to be here, they could be here.
We do, and I have the, should the board require? I have the cards.
Okay. So we'll start with the board. Ed, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mark? Jason?
No.
Becky?
I have a question, just because I'm kind of a newbie to this. Just wondering, the criteria for this type of license as far as the town goes? Because this would be like our fifth liquor store in town? So I was just curious, what, does that factor into anything, or?
I believe a town administrator can answer that question.
I wasn't sure.
So we have different licenses available based upon population?
Okay.
So we no longer have any additional all-package stores? So the only license that we have available would be a wine and malt.
Got it, okay. Thank you. There being no further questions, would someone like to make a motion to approve the license as presented?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the malt, is it? Beer and malt alcohol license for?
For?
Ari Isa of 931 Salem Street, Merrymart Inc. For, what else do I got to say there? I think that's about it, right?
Meredith Buckley is the proposed manager.
Meredith Buckley is the manager.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. It's unanimous? Thank you for coming in, and good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I now need a motion to close this public hearing. I did not want to make one to open it. We'll do that for the next one. Make a motion to close this public hearing, because we open a separate?
Make a motion to close this public meeting at 9:36.
Hearing.
Public heating.
Public hearing. I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of closing this public hearing? And now, can I have a motion to open the public hearing for, let's see if I can read this correctly? This is, the name. Oh, Tokeet Corona, and they're looking for an all-alcohol beverage license. It's a restaurant. And I need a motion to open the public hearing on that.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Tokeet Corona at 9:36.
Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous? The hearing is now open. Is someone present? This is a request to the Groveland Select Board. We're having a public hearing today, Monday, August 19th, on the application for an on-premises restaurant, all-alcoholic beverage license for Tokeet Corona, Groveland, Mass., Corporation DBA. Tokeet Corona is at 8 Elm Park, Groveland, Massachusetts. Maria Eugenia Soto is the proposed manager. Is Maria present? All on?
Virtual.
Hello.
Hello?
Hello, Maria.
Yes?
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Very good, thank you. I just, we just opened the public hearing on your request for an all-alcohol beverages license for, I'm probably not saying it correctly, is it Tokeet Corona? Did I say it well?
Yes, Tekeate Corona.
Take that. Thank you so much. Would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, my name is Maria Eugenia Soto. I'm living in 19 East Highland Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. My zip code is 01902. I worked on nine, ninth manager from Tequila for two years, brand, Brian and Grill location on 847 Cambridge Street, Lynn, Massachusetts.
Thank you. When do you expect to open your restaurant?
Tonopah Square.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
As soon as possible.
Oh, as soon as?
One month.
Oh, you're ready to go now, evidently. Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone, abutters or otherwise, who wants to make a statement? Yes. Say your name and address.
Don Grinning, Mill Street Extension, Groveland. I'm just curious if you have all the forms? The, I've been to the previous meetings with zoning and planning. They never were able to produce a lease. They've only got like eight parking spaces on the property. All the neighbors, all the other businesses are not willing to let people park on their property. The other two boards weren't that concerned about it. I'm just wondering if you have all the documents that are required? The citizenship, the Corey forms, the, well, mainly the lease, because they couldn't even produce one before. So not sure how you can give them a license when you can't get the information. So if you have it, I'm just curious.
Hi, I'd like to chime in. My name is Chris, I'm going to be the assistant manager for Tekeate Corona.
Go ahead, Chris.
So yeah, we did produce all the necessary requirements for the ABC application. One of them is actually a full-executed lease, which we did submit to both the city and the state. We also submitted a Corey request form for Maria, she's the, going to be the liquor license manager. And I understand this concern about the parking. It's something we can definitely work with our patrons to make sure they're not taking up spots from other businesses, or parking, obstructing the roadways from the neighbors and residents nearby.
Okay. We were currently having a hearing just on their application for the alcohol license. I don't have any prior knowledge of the parking arrangements down there.
They received approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals to operate a restaurant.
Okay. So it would seem that they have the approvals to have a restaurant. How well it goes?
Well, they don't meet the requirements, though. They got a waiver on the requirements.
From the zoning board? Okay, yes?
Can I take the mic?
Yes, you may.
I don't mean take it, I just want to use it.
Oh, okay. I was going to let you take it for a bit, but?
My name is, excuse the frog in my throat, the damn thing has been going on enough. My name is Carl Booth, I live at 289 Main Street, right across from the Family Hair Cutting. I lived in town since 1965, and we moved down to 289 Main, November 71. I've seen restaurants come and go there, no problem. I'm a musician, and a great part of my life, I've worked all kinds of gigs, and I've seen what alcohol can do. And nowadays, when you hear of all the shootings and fights, you go on. Golden Square is a nice quiet place at night. Got a little parking problem. I'm not against, I'm not against the restaurant, but I am against the alcohol. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see a hand. Yes? Ah, Mr. Scanlon.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I have a few questions. How many seats are at the bar? Because it's a sports bar.
We applied for a capacity of 50 seats.
50 seats at the bar? A big bar?
This includes the entire establishment, not just the bar and the restaurant.
In the restaurant side is how many?
It's 50 in total.
Oh, 50 in total.
Yeah.
And the bar holds how many seats?
Looks like 16.
Our chart looks like maybe 16. Does that sound correct?
Well?
Yes.
No, did they give you a package?
Yes.
I've got a picture right here.
I mean, really?
We get packages.
Yeah, well. I'm not against it, it's just, I would have thought there would be a little more preparation for this.
A little more, what was that?
Sports bar, so.
Oh, you wanted a sports bar?
I'd be a customer, but. It is a sports bar, which means?
Sportsism.
You're going to, yeah. You ever been at the 97 on the variety, you'd know what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just to address some of the concerns, our focus isn't?
Put a waiver on this. Jesus.
Just to address some of the concerns, our focus isn't on alcohol, our main focus is on food. We just want to have alcohol to be able to serve, we're not going to be a full bar.
Well, you've got a big sign outside, a sports bar.
Let him finish. Okay, so?
I think this is a little bit too early. That's all my questions, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm Jim Scanlon from 42 Center Street.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, is anybody else, yes?
So I'm Mike Lee Anderson. I own Phoenix Printing, 282 Main Street, large parking lot. My concern is the sports bar. I keep hearing that there's plenty of parking. There is no parking in Groveland. So I have no idea where these sports bar patrons are going. I was rather disappointed with the zoning board's decision to allow reduced parking to be permitted. They didn't seem really to care about how people that own property that have parking, their concerns with, you know. I never knew there was going to be a sports bar, the original reduced parking meeting that I came to. And when I heard that, I was like, well, that's just great. Now, they're going to show up and maybe park in my parking lot. I don't know how late this is supposed to go on for a bar, but, you know, say 1:00 in the morning or whatever. I got, I live upstairs in that property. I don't need broken bottles, people falling down, throwing up, calling the cops, all that crap that goes with a bar. So, that's how I feel about it. I'm a little disappointed that there's not more Elm Park people here to voice their concerns about the one-way road, because they're going to be, going to be parking along that Elm Park in front of your nice fancy houses. So, it's kind of a shame that other people aren't here to speak up about this. That's all I got.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
My name is Stephanie Bartelt. I live on Chestnut Street, right up the hill, and I'm very excited to have a new Mexican restaurant within walking distance from my house. They are welcome to park in front of my house, but I would like to remind everybody that there is a municipal parking lot across the street. So perhaps you could solve the parking issue by putting a little sign on the door that says "Additional Parking Across the Street" at the municipal lot. That might be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
And, board members. Becky? I have no questions. Jason?
I have no questions.
Mark?
No, I just, it went through the, I didn't watch the zoning meeting or any of that, so.
I did not either.
My bad, I'm sorry. But if they approved it, you know, if they didn't raise any concerns, I really don't want to go against them.
Right, well, our task is the alcohol license, and we're not in charge of the parking. So, Ed?
Couple of questions. I'm looking in this paperwork for hours of operation, and I, am I missing it here?
I couldn't find it either.
I don't, I don't see it here.
It's typically, let me go back. Hang on. Our town administrator, I thought all of these papers, I'm just.
The hours of operation should be stated in the Zoning Board of Appeals approval. Trying to pull up the approval now, but if the applicant has that information readily available, they're free to chime in.
You have it? I'm looking for it. Yes, no question? One's frozen.
Yeah, the hours of operation shall be Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Friday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Did everybody hear that all right? Okay.
Second, second question. Capacity of 50 people. Where are you going to put 50 cars if everybody comes in in their own vehicle? There's limited parking today, during the day, in the square. So if they're opening up at 11:00, you go by there, and the people using the laundromat, the parking lot is full. Where are they going to put 50 vehicles? Or where are they going to park? Is there, there's no parking plan with this paperwork? Unless, again, unless I missed that one, too?
No, I think the, the forms that we're required to review center on the alcohol and the seating in the restaurant. And that's, that's why we don't, we're not here to vote on parking spaces, that was already handled.
We're here to vote on approval of the license, but?
Yes, we are.
To me, they, maybe we could ask one of the manager or an interested party there, where are they going to put all the vehicles?
Chris or Maria, would you like to?
Yeah.
Speak a little bit more about how you're going to manage the parking for the restaurant? I mean, I know it's your, I would.
Yeah, I see that's a. I notice it's a concern with the neighbors. We don't, you know, obviously, being a restaurant, even though we applied for 50 seating, we really don't expect to always have, you know, you go into any restaurant, they're never at full capacity, even on a Saturday or Sunday night. And, you know, just because it says 50 doesn't mean 50 cars are going to come. Most people come as a group, as a party, a carpool. Some will come from the neighbors, they walk. Like mentioned earlier, there is some parking, there's some municipal parking. We can, we will tell all our patrons, we'll put a sign that says, "Don't park in front of houses, try not to park in front of the streets, don't park in front of other businesses." It's something that we'll definitely enforce, seeing how it's a big concern.
Thank you.
Through the chairman, could you add the question? Make sure they know you can't park on Main Street. Say, "Well, you can't park on Main Street."
Right, are you aware of where parking is allowed in the downtown area? Are you aware that on the main road, there's only parking spaces on School Street? Main Street does not have parking spaces. So in other words, the, the side street that runs alongside the store and past the hair-cutting place, there's no parking on that road? The question is, are you aware of that? Yes or no?
No, and now we are, so.
Okay.
We'll definitely enforce it.
Okay. So is aware of that, now?
I think we should, we should see some kind of a plan for parking. And it would be unusual to have 50 vehicles with 50 people, some by, a capacity of 50 people, but I think they should submit some kind of a, a parking plan, where they expect to put these vehicles? Because, I'll tell you, they're not going to park up at the municipal lot up on the corner of School Street and, God, they're not going to park up there and walk down. If they, if they were, the people that work in the strip mall now would be parking up there, and they don't. So that, that's not going to work. They're, they're not going to park up there and walk down. All right, I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a parking plan submitted with this application.
It is an application for an alcohol license in the restaurant.
All right, let me rephrase. In order to approve the, the license for the alcohol, I would like to see a parking plan submitted with this, to see where they're going to put the vehicles.
So I can share with the board the parking plan that was submitted to the Planning Board, in which case they issued them a special permit to reduce the parking requirements to allow them to proceed with their application. So there was an approval, and I can share my screen to show the board if a parking plan is being requested.
Yes, why don't we, why don't we take a look at that? Well, we're just going to look at the parking plan first, so, and then you'll be right after that. Thank you. Come on, that light. Is that light right by you, or is it behind the ceiling?
I don't.
You got it? Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Can we explain it to you? Jason probably could, because he was there, but. So the, behind the building here, where the shade-in area is, there's nine parking spaces. There's two dumpsters within those spaces. All those spaces are the only spaces that that building has by the owner. The parking space is on the opposite side of the street, that's all municipal parking open everywhere. So they have nine space.
They have nine spaces to share with the hairdresser, the restaurant, the laundromat, and the health store at the end. The town has a plan that shows 192 parking spaces in Elm Park. The problem is, by the zoning bylaw, they have to be within 800 feet of the requested spot. The municipal spot's 1,100 feet. The church is probably a quarter of a mile. Can't count his parking spaces, you can't count applied graphics, you can't count the old woods, you can't count the gas station, you can't count John Bell's. All I could figure is they were counting people's driveways and garages.
What was, so the waiver was to allow them to share the nine spaces?
So the approval is for a special permit to reduce the parking, which you can see on the screen. It was recorded at the Registry of Deeds and was issued on May 7th. When you scroll down, you'll see the conditions of the approval. It looks like, again, I was not on the Planning Board, but it looks like the applicant shall post in their establishment and on the window sign showing a detailed map of publicly available parking for their clientele. The applicant should recommend to staff that they park away from the site to free up closer spaces for customers. The special permit is non-assignable. Any changes to the special permit will require subsequent hearing. The applicant shall receive any federal, state, local permits required. And everything else is pretty standard for conditions there, it's not really site-specific.
Okay, so, so the pressure is really on the business to have their clientele find appropriate parking?
It appears that that was a discussion that the Planning Board had during this conversation, but I'd have to pull back the meetings and minutes, et cetera. But the applicant received a permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for use of the site as a restaurant, which is up on the screen, and has been approved with the Essex County Regis, Southern, recorded with the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. And then they received a special permit from the Planning Board of Appeals, a Planning Board, for a parking reduction. And that's the decision we have right here.
Thank you. And gentleman in the third row, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Yes?
Well, I just want to add, knowing that you're in fact in line of the election, my partner said, he's not going to allow any cash going in.
Correct. Right, so, so all of this is clearly laid out in the decision here. It's not really up to us to vote a parking plan, and the request before us is for the alcohol license for the restaurant. And I don't, I reviewed the paperwork, I didn't see anything in that paperwork that would be the cause for us to deny the alcohol license. But again, I'm not 30 years on the board either. Our town administrator put the packet together, and it's, everything is in order as far as your review?
They've submitted all of their. They've submitted all of the required documentation from the state under the ABCC regulations that we would submit.
And so what's, what is the pleasure of the board then?
Well, I think since Mr. Graney has brought a great concern in the past about whether or not the business would be able to succeed, I think it would behoove us to give them every opportunity to succeed, which would also be granting them the alcohol license. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve license for Tecate Corona Groveland Corporation at Elm Park.
I'll second that. It's open again for discussion. There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Four in favor, one opposed. You've been granted your license. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back, circling back, as I said, I need a motion to close the public hearing for the-
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Tecate Corona Groveland Corporation at Elm Park at 7:00.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing? It's unanimous. Okay, so I'm going to circle back to public comment. I think we had, was it just one person? Christine, Christina? Hello? Welcome.
I really wish I didn't have to speak tonight. I really do. Number, the first thing-
If you could please, I, I know you, and you know me, but-
Oh, Christina Manikus, 24 King Street, Groveland.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. The housing production plan. Back in July, the planning board had a meeting with the select board, and it seemed as though there was a sense of urgency to plat, to pass the housing production plan. So the planning board passed it, and then they sent it to the select board. The select board met on July 15th and approved it. That was over a month ago. We were in communication with our elected state officials last week, and they told us that the town really needs an approved housing production plan. That makes sense. So it has to go to the state for approval. You would think that after July 15th, that would have been submitted within a couple days, but it has not yet been submitted. So we're going on the fifth week of that not being submitted. Here's how it goes. The town says, "Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is supposed to submit it." So we've asked Merrimack Valley Planning Submission, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to submit it. And they have said, "The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is willing to accommodate your direction," not my direction, "the direction of the board, select board, and the planning board." So we ask that this housing production plan be submitted as soon as possible. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission says they have to work on the pictures, and they have to work on the graphics. Well, the state is only going to look at the content, they're not going to look at the pretty things. So we ask that that be submitted as soon as possible. If, if we need help, if you need help, we're happy to help you. We'll take it to Boston. But this really needs to be submitted. Senator Tarr told us last Thursday that your housing production plan needs to be submitted. And quite frankly, to find out that it ha, I mean, needs to be approved, to, quite frankly, to find out that it hasn't been submitted, kind of widens the gap of trust between the public and the town. That gap should narrow, but it's widening. So please, get that plan approved. Get that plan sent in so it can be approved. We would really appreciate that. There's no reason why it can't be sent, submitted. The town can do so. It doesn't have to go through the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And you got a copy of the man's email, he said they're willing to accommodate your direction, so please, please, please submit that. Second thing. Bethany Communities created their own page for 36 Garrison Street. Guess what? A link to that page is on the town's website. That is unprecedented. It's inappropriate, it's free advertising for the project, it lists the benefits according to Bethany Homes. I understand that they probably are upset that the town did a study and it didn't jive with what they wanted, because 72% of people were not in favor of the project. But we all heard Mr. Bethany say, "We did our own market research." So that's their market research, this was the town's market research. We're done. It shouldn't be, "Okay, town, you did it, now we want to do it." Bethany Communities does not run this town, and it seems like that is happening. The documentation on the Bethan, on the 36 Garrison Street website should be communication to and from those involved. It should not have this, I'm going to say it, and I mean it, propaganda website from Bethany. And if you look at Bethany's websites, they're all bethany.org. This one is groveland.com. How does that happen? How come that doesn't say bethany.org? So the first request we have this evening is for the housing production plan to be submitted as soon as possible, and for some fairness to be demonstrated, and the Bethany Communities' propaganda link be removed from the town website, because it's inappropriate, it should not be there. And it shows bias from the town in favor of them, and you ask anybody. That's what we feel, and we ask that that be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, and so the board is, the select board doesn't comment or converse following public comment? We just go through our agenda, but when we get to that item, the comments and the questions that were raised can be addressed. Next on our agenda is department comment and update. Are there any departments that, not that I'm aware of either? Okay, so we're moving on down to appointments and resignations, and we have, I think, three appointments on the agenda? Has everyone had a chance to review them? Okay, two are for the cultural council, and the third, I think, is the police department? Am I right on that? Dispatch? Yes, okay. So whenever you're ready, unless you have concerns or questions about the recommendations, I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Carol Function of Groveland as a member of the Cultural Council effective August 19th, 2024, through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Next, we have requests to appoint Ruth Revard of Groveland as a member of the Cultural Council, effective August 19th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027.
I'll make an appoint, a motion to appoint Ruth Revad of Groveland as a member of the Cultural Council, effective August 19th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Next, a request to appoint John Barberi of Haverhill to the position of part-time dispatcher for the Groveland Police Department, effective August 19th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Barberi of Haverhill to the position of part-time dispatcher for Groveland Police Department, effective August 19th, 2024.
I'll second that.
So motion and seconded. Discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And did we have a chance to review the minutes? Do you want to do those quickly, or do you want to wait on those? I see that we can move down to, were they in the packet?
I didn't see them.
Approval of minutes? Okay, so we can move back to those-
Okay.
-towards the end, if that's easier. I see that our attorney is here, so now I'm jumping around here. Let's just see, did that? Oh, we have a request for a one-day liquor license for Bridget Hogan of Cambridge, Massachusetts, for September 14th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a private event at VZ Memorial Park. All of the required paperwork should be in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Bridget Hogan of Cambridge, Mass, for September 14th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., a private event at VZ Memorial Park.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Has everyone had a chance to review it?
Mm-hmm.
It looks to be in order.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Next, I have a request for a one-day liquor license for Lisa Chandler of Groveland for September 7th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a public event, the annual 5K road race and Coral, Cornhole Tournament at the Pines Recreation Area.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Lisa Chandler of Groveland for September 7th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a public event, the annual 5K road race and cornhole tournament at the Pines Recreation Area.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? There being none?
I just had a quick question. What was the, are they doing the cornhole out front here or down there too? Because I know last year it was on the front lawn, I was just curious.
I don't know that.
They've moved the location down to the Pines Recreation Area.
I was just curious for myself.
Okay. You playing? Did you practice?
No, I'm horrible at that game, but it was fun to watch, so.
Okay. All in favor? Call for the vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, you had in your packet a town organizational chart. This doesn't require any votes or anything. I had asked for it just as a informational exercise, because I know we've changed some positions and we've moved some positions around, and I thought it would be helpful to try and see how things are set up now. We can move this ahead to the next agenda if you want more time on it, but basically the, the solid lines indicate appointing authority, and then when you see the dashed lines, that's, that's indicating that that is the daily oversight, the individual or department head or director who's responsible for that oversight of that department. So we do need to vote this? I would just, I had asked for this as informational, because I know that, you know, we added, we changed the highway department to a program and project manager, and, you know, I wanted to see how that looked in the chart, and I know that with the town administrator, we added a position there. And we have the cemetery maintenance now covered inside of the highway department. So that's shown there as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see it moved to the next meeting as well, just so we can just take the time to discuss on potential ways that we could refine it, and what it would take to refine some of the, uh-
Sure.
-some of the things we see there.
Okay, is everybody in agreement to move it ahead to our next meeting again? It'll be on the agenda? Okay, that's fine. All right, so then, following the agenda, we are now up to our response to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And we have a draft letter from our attorney, and our attorney is present tonight. Nice to see you. Adam, right?
Yes, good to see you again.
Nice to see you. And I have an extra copy here if anybody cannot find their letter. Page 66, Kathy. So it's also available if anybody in the audience wanted to see it. I know that was a request, and there were extra copies made. If anybody didn't get one and wants one, I, I have, I have extra, no, that's not it. I have another one somewhere in my bag, but I think there's more there. If you want, we can put this up on the screen, if that would make it easier, because our task tonight is to review and, and get things in motion here. So, let's see if I can get this moving. So what I can do while we're going to screen sharing is I'll just kind of read through it quickly, and then if you want, our attorney is here to answer questions about it, and if you have any concerns about what's stated in it, you can go paragraph by paragraph, but maybe one read-through would be good to begin with. So this goes to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and to Ms. Rebecca Frally-Watchell, who is the Tax Credit Program Manager. And this would be because they're looking for subsidized funding, right? Okay, good. So, of course, it opens to you, Ms. Watchell. "The town of Groveland received the Under-Secretary of Housing Development's correspondence dated July 17th, 2024 regarding the above referenced application for a 40B project eligibility letter of Bethany Communities in, in connection with the above referenced property known as 36 Garrison Street, Groveland. The application contemplates construction of 91-bedroom age-restricted rental units on the property and two buildings, which would each can, each containing 45 units. As in initial matter, the town wishes to emphasize that it is generally amenable to the creation of affordable housing within the town, and believes affordable housing is of significant importance in the town. Indeed, within the last several years, the town approved the construction of 192 affordable units within four buildings to be located at 4 Sewell Street. The Sewell Street project is, to the town's understanding, awaiting approval of a regulatory agreement by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities." Wow, everything circles back. "At which time, a building permit will issue, and those 192 units will become countable towards the town's..." What's S-H-I?
Subsidized housing inventory.
Thank you. Subsidized housing inventory, thus achieving greater than the 10% affordability housing within the town. As such, the town effectively has sufficient affordable housing to satisfy the local need, and it would be a hardship for a small community like Groveland to absorb an additional 90 units thereafter. Moreover, the town has significant concerns about other aspects of the project, as is explained more fully below. First and foremost, the applicant fails to demonstrate site control, as contemplated by the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Regulations. As this agency already referenced in its request to the applicant for supplemental application materials, and as the applicant conceded in its supplemental correspondence dated June 20th, 2024, site control is an absolute regulatory prerequisite for project eligibility, and 760 CMR 56.04 is cited. Site control is not a defined term under 760 CMR. While a lease agreement may be sufficient to demonstrate site control in certain contexts, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. "To the extent a lease may be sufficient in the context of affordable housing, reviewing authorities have an absolute right to review a copy of such lease to ascertain such matters as the lease term, assignment approval process, and events of default." There's several legal references there. "Here, the applicant has not provided a lease. In fact, the materials submitted via the applicant's June 20th, 2024 submission indicate that there is no lease, and if the fine print is read carefully, there may never be a lease. Instead, the applicant is party to an option to enter into a ground lease agreement. Pursuant to the option, the applicant does not have a right to enter into a specific lease agreement, but rather a theoretical right to enter into a yet-to-be-drafted ground lease in a form to be mutually agreed upon by the optioner and optionee. While the option explicitly recognizes several conditions precedent to performance by the optioner, one of which is the town's approval of the project. So the applicant can have no leasehold interest unless and until the project is approved. There is an additional implicit condition precedent of the optioner and optionee reaching an agreement at some unspecified date, as to what they agree are terms, conditions, and covenants and other provisions that are used usual and customary and normally- and covenants and other positions that are usual and customary and normally required by prudent parties. More to the point, the applicant's failure to provide the Town and the EOH, the Executive Office of Housing, with an actual lease is a failure to demonstrate the applicant, in fact, holds the interest in the locus it claims, and therefore fails to satisfy an essential prerequisite for project eligibility. Second, the project fails to comply with the letter and spirit of affordable housing legislation and regulation in Massachusetts. The project fails to promote site and building design that is consonant with the surrounding area, a rural road in an area comprised mostly of single-family homes where there are no sidewalks and where the placement of two large 45-unit buildings will be out of character with the surrounding area. While it appears the applicant has built similar projects in other communities, its project in Boxer was built upon a more than 30-acre site, thus not posing the density issues that would be posed by the applicant's proposed construction at the property's site. Stated simply, the project is too dense, more than 13 units per acre, and out of character in relation to the property's surrounding neighborhood. Third, construction of the applicant's proposed project would remove critically needed open space. The property represents one of the few remaining open spaces in its neighborhood. The space thus represents a habitat for many species of wildlife and significantly impacts lighting for both wildlife and surrounding residences. Fourth, the application, as currently constituted, imperils public safety, and given the location of the property and the magnitude of the proposed project, it is likely such safety concerns could not be mitigated by improved design. Access to the property for a project of the magnitude proposed is infeasible, given the rural nature of the road, its lack of sidewalks, and its steady flow of pedestrian traffic by families with small children. If the project were deemed eligible, the Zoning Board of Appeals would doubtless require studies of these concerns, and even under the best of circumstances, the applicant would be required to make substantial improvements to the design of the road and its supporting infrastructure in an effort to mitigate what appears to be certain impairment of a significant segment of the public should the project be constructed. Similarly, the Town's first responders are quite limited in number and will not be able to provide adequate emergency responses at the property should the project be constructed. The Town employs only two full-time firefighters and a chief. Based upon the experience of responding to calls at similar facilities, it is quite likely the Town will be unable to provide timely and adequate emergency response to this facility should it be constructed. Finally, the design of the project has several apparent design deficiencies of concern. For example, the plans submitted show only 109 parking spaces for 90 units, and therefore more likely than not, many residents which would appear to be insufficient, at least given the information provided thus far. There is also no provision made for staff, visitor, or carryover parking. Similarly, a lack of sidewalks in the vicinity of the project, as well as an apparent lack of destination for piling snow in the winter months constitute additional concerns, as do the significant amount of traffic that will be introduced to the property internally as well as to the external road network, which is insufficient to accommodate such increased traffic load. Indeed, the applicant has represented to the Town that the facility will not be staffed at night, who then will clear the way for emergency responders, most likely to be called to the site. Finally, it should be noted that the applicant represented in its request for a project eligibility letter from you that it had met with local officials and neighbors. However, that is not the case. It was not until after the application was provided to the Executive Office of Housing that the applicant reached out to the Town Boards and the neighbors. In closing, the Town understands that 40B developments often exceed local zoning standards. However, the project presently proposed is, based upon its design and configuration, entirely inappropriate, in conflict with the design of the neighborhood and area in which the property is located, and would constitute an overburdening of that neighborhood and of the community as a whole if constructed. Even when looking past the applicant's lack of site control, the applicant would need to undertake significant additional work to develop an appropriate plan for the property before the Town could endorse the same. It is for these reasons that the Town urges that the PEL be denied or that it at least be issued for a revised project that fully addresses the concerns noted above. The Town thanks the Executive Office of Housing for its consideration of the Town's comments and concern regarding the applicant's proposed project at the property. And it's respectfully submitted by the Groveland Select Board. And this is our draft... Well, our attorney, as you know, Lisa Mead, not Adam Costa, but they both worked together, so I'm sure they spoke, was present at the meeting in which many residents spoke. And I hope you can see that what you said and what you felt was heard and was included in this letter. And the only comment I've gotten in addition on perhaps on this letter, this goes back to the public comment at the beginning of our meeting, is the question, maybe our attorney, Mr. Costa, can answer. Would it be at all a good idea to attach the Groveland Housing Production Plan to this letter? We've... The Planning Board approved it. We endorsed it. I mean, I personally thought that was it, that it would just go on forward, but evidently it's sitting somewhere while someone works on pictures.
So, Madam Chair, certainly it can do no harm to provide a copy of that housing production plan with the letter. Certainly, the housing production plan doesn't have any legal effect until such time as it's submitted, it's reviewed by the state, and it's ultimately approved and certified. Having said that, I do think that it sort of bolsters the point that we've made in the, I guess, the second paragraph of the letter, which is that the Town has been making strides toward meeting the affordable housing demand and the edict that's been issued by the state. So there's no harm in submitting it. I don't know that it has any legal effect necessarily. But again, just to drive home the point for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, that Groveland is not the sort of community that has ignored the need for affordable housing or its burden or obligation, but is working not just to approve projects elsewhere in the community that provide affordable housing, but also to develop a housing production plan that is going to set forth a path in the future to continue to create those affordable housing opportunities. So I think it's a wise thing to do.
Okay. Thank you. So open up for the comments from the board on the letter, dude. I thought it was incredibly well-written, but I think...
I can't see anything missing out of it.
Okay.
I think they did a great job writing it. Thank you. I agree.
Okay. Jason?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. And Becky?
I think they hit all the points that we discussed.
Okay. Would we want to approve the letter and attach the housing plan to it? Would that be the motion?
I don't think we can attach the housing plan because I don't know that it would be approved by... in time.
I think Attorney Costa just told us we could attach it.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. If you want to jump up. Sorry, you have to...
Thank you.
Yep. You have to do the name and address thing one more time. Thank you. I know.
Are you Kathy Granger's brother?
He's not going to confirm her to die.
Christina Manikis, 24 King Street, Groveland. Can the housing production plan be attached to this for approval at the same time?
Through you, Madam Chair. So it can't be only because it wouldn't be going to the same division within the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. This is specifically the low-income housing tax credits program, which is the subsidy through which this particular applicant is seeking preliminary determination of eligibility. That's a different department or a different division within the department than the division that would approve the housing production plan. I don't see why if the housing production plan is ready, and I wouldn't want you to submit some early draft of it. It sounds like from the comments I had heard a bit earlier from the speaker at the podium that it's already been prepared, is more or less in final form and ready for submittal. So there's no reason why it couldn't be submitted with one letter of transmittal to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for approval, and at the same time, this letter sends with an additional copy attached to it, simply stating that it's been submitted simultaneously for approval by that office. I don't see any harm in doing that.
Okay. So there's two things. One is we can... Even if we haven't gotten it approved by the other department in the Executive Office of Housing, because the Merrimack Valley planning, I think, is with them now. The problem is they're working on, I don't know what, because we've been through everything we had to do. So can we attach it and say that this was approved by the Planning Board and endorsed by the Board of Selectmen as a show of good faith?
I think we can. And again, to your point, and you chose the right terminology, it's just a showing of good faith. I want it to be very clear, not just for board members, but for the public, that one of the reasons communities adopt housing production plans is because once you've adopted the plan and it's been certified by the state, if you then bring yourself into compliance with the plan in the future, it gives you some flexibility through what are called safe harbors to reject 40B developments that otherwise, if you rejected them, you'd be overturned by the state. It gives you that greater flexibility. In all likelihood, I just can't conceive of a situation where that plan, not yet even submitted to EOHLC, would somehow work its way through the system, get approved, you'd then approve of other projects so as to give you a safe harbor to protect you against this particular project. So your housing production plan isn't going to perform the function you want it to perform for this particular project. There may be other grounds upon which this project gets rejected.
Correct.
But it's not going to provide that legal protection. But it is a sign that the community is doing all the right things to try and recognize its obligation, its requirement that it create affordable housing opportunities. So I don't think there's any harm in submitting a copy of that plan together with this letter. And we can even include a footnote in this second paragraph, saying that we're including a copy of the plan as a further showing of the efforts that are being made by the Town to create those affordable housing opportunities.
At the same time, can the plan be submitted to the other office for approval? That's my question. Because the delay is just...
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, the answer is yes.
I'm not familiar with the process outside of us. I think I would...
Do you want to ask Attorney Costa?
Or we could ask our Town Administrator, I think would be more familiar, maybe.
So we received a grant, working with the MVPC, with our other regional partners, to do a regional housing production plan. So our community is one chapter of the 15 communities that participated, as was approved, in our former housing production plan. So I believe the holdup is trying to finalize all those chapters within the main document to be submitted collectively through the Division for Approval. Obviously, from a legal perspective, I believe each individual community needs to be approved, but I believe that the holdup is the comprehensive document that they would like to submit on behalf of each community.
That doesn't make sense because you need to submit Groveland by itself.
Okay.
You really need to submit it by itself. And the delay, the Town is causing a problem here. This needs to be submitted. It does.
Just pause for a second.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding, we can submit our chapter, if you want to call it, as a show of good faith. And even if we submitted it separately from the other chapters, looking for the approval, it still would not act in time as a safe harbor on this particular project. We're more likely to get a favorable response from the Executive Office of Housing based on the concerns raised in this letter.
I understand that.
Okay.
But this needs to go in because you have... The clock starts ticking, and until they get their comprehensive permit, you can work on getting your approval from the state for the housing production plan. So the sooner you get it in, the better off we're going to be.
But as our Town Administrator explained, our housing production plan is funded by a grant that funded 15... Was it 15 communities?
Yeah, they didn't know. They only had three. They only worked on three, right? They're working on three. That's what the email said to me. They weren't working on all 15. They're working on three.
Okay. What we can do is follow up on that, but for now...
It shouldn't be so difficult. You know, take it. The Town Manager, the Town Administrator has it. Take it, put a letter, send it in for approval. It shouldn't be so difficult.
It should not be difficult. But I'll tell you, we have been working around the clock on this, and I know our Town Administrator has been working around the clock on this. And despite all of our efforts and despite everything that the attorney has done, this is where we are. The reality is, we can send in this letter, we can attach our approved... The Town's... We can say the Town has approved this. The Planning Board approved it. We endorsed it. So the Town has done everything it's supposed to do. And we can send that to Executive Office of Housing with this letter.
But the Town can also send this in for approval. I guess we're not going to do that.
We will seek to get that expedited. And Christina, thank you for looking into this more.
I have one more question. On the letter, it says, "The Sewell project is, to the Town's understanding, awaiting approval of a regulatory agreement by EOHLC."
That's the Executive Office of Housing.
I know. But you might want to talk to the developer about that because I'm not quite sure that's accurate. There's something else he's waiting for, and I don't believe that's it. But someone needs to look into that for accuracy. And the last question, it says, "The Town..." It is for these reasons that urges the Town, the PEL, to be denied. We have a request. Can you just end the sentence there? But it's your decision. But that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And anybody? Yes? Go ahead. Thank you.
Craig Weaver, 25 Cannon Hill Avenue. This is a question the counsel might be able to answer. What, if any, would there be penalties for the applicant for being, let's just put it politely and say, less than truthful on their application? Meaning the developer making misstatements or whatever you like to call it on the application.
Through you, Madam Chair. So the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is one of multiple subsidies in Massachusetts that provides these preliminary determinations of eligibility to potential Chapter 40B developers. In this case, they're issuing or potentially issuing that sort of an approval under the Low-Income Housing Tax Credits Program. Mass Housing Finance Agency, Mass Housing Partnership Fund, or other agencies that do the same thing. I'm generally familiar with their internal process when they review applications. It's a review process they can take anywhere from three months to nine months, plus or minus. During that review process, they investigate the particulars of the applicant, the development team. They ask a number of questions on the application form that must be answered. If it's found, and I only have limited experience with this occurring, but if it's found that an applicant has been untruthful in its completion of that application form, they can, of course, deny an eligibility determination. They can also rescind a determination once it's been issued. And I've had that happen in one project a number of years ago, where the subsidy issued a preliminary determination of eligibility, the process got underway locally, and then it was determined that one of the representations made, a fairly significant one, was false. And the subsidy withdrew the eligibility determination, and the project was effectively defeated. So that's their recourse if they find that an applicant has been untruthful in its representations.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, I believe there was also a third misrepresentation on the application as to the size of the units, the square footage of the units, if I'm not mistaken. That's what I've been told.
I would agree. I mean, from what I read of the application and from what was said publicly, he said at the public meeting that they had to be at least 600 square feet. And I thought the application was more like 200 or 400. It was really small.
210.
How much was it?
210.
Thank you. 210. I thought that was maybe a mistake, but then he said they had to be 600. So I don't know what that is about.
There are certain minimum size requirements for affordable units. Subsidizing agencies can grant waivers from those requirements, but it's rare, in my experience, anyway. 600 square feet for a studio or one bedroom is usually the minimum. But of course, that is something, again, I don't know that the applicant or the applicant's representatives are necessarily going to be bound by statements they've made, whether they've made them publicly or privately. What they will be bound by is what they put on paper and submitted to the subsidizing agency, because when that agency issues, if it issues, a project eligibility letter, that's going to define the parameters of the project and what will ultimately... would ultimately be submitted to your Zoning Board of Appeals as part of a comprehensive program.
So could you or Attorney Mead take a... Just look at... You have the application. They said, I think it is 210 square feet, and you're now saying that would be not allowable? And maybe we could add that to the list?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Good point. Anyone else? Okay. How about our board? Ed?
I don't have any call.
Mark? I thought I kind of did this already, didn't I?
Yeah.
I'll do it again. Jason, we stopped at you because we now know we can attach our approved, but it won't get it approved.
Right.
As long as it's understood as a show of good faith. And Becky?
Nope. I'm all good. Thank you.
So if we're all in agreement, we can... Okay, so if we're all in agreement, we can take a vote to send the letter with the attachment of our housing production plan as a show of good faith, and ask the attorney to also add in the square footage if it's found that that's in error on the application. Is that clear enough for you?
It is.
Okay. Someone wish to make that motion? Can you just say so moved?
Yes, so moved.
Thanks. And if you have a second on that? The motion is to approve the letter with the housing production plan attached as a show of good faith, and the addition, if they can check on the application, that they did put down 210 square feet, to note that that's an error as well. And do we, we got a second on that?
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right, so no further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. The letter will go out. Thank you.
I just have a question. If you could attach that, that letter, why don't you send it to the state? When is it going to be sent in? When is our housing...
I will, I will seek to find out some answers for you, I promise. Thank you. These are new things to me as well. We do this production plan once every, I think, five years, so it does seem like it's just sitting around, not going anywhere, but we'll work on that. Okay. Any, yes?
If you have a question on when or date the letter will be sent in?
Do you want to coordinate with our town administrator on that?
I will. I mean, we can finalize the letter tomorrow and have it sent in within the week.
Within this week? You're welcome. Okay. Are we set then? Okay, and we made the vote. So we're move on, we're going to move on on the agenda then. Were there minutes attached? Did anybody review minutes? Do you want me to put them on the next agenda?
Yeah. I didn't see them, but it could be me.
We could put them onto the next agenda, it's fine. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'll put them on, I'll make a note, it'll go onto the next agenda. Let's find mine. I'm sorry. All right. So that concludes discussion and possible votes, and I don't, I'm not aware of any old or unfinished business. I'm also not aware of any items that weren't reasonably anticipated. So we're going to move on to town administrator's time, and I think everybody received a memo, and Rebecca can explain that to us as well.
Yes, so over the course of the last few years, I've recognized that the board is looking for some additional information as part of the update. So I tried a new approach this year, or this time, with a memo that kind of gives you a little bit more detail in terms of the projects that we've been working on at Town Hall. So I finalized that and provided that to you this evening. So a couple of the highlights, as we had discussed at our former meeting, we are working on a time and attendance platform for our employees. We rolled that out the last pay cycle, there were some hiccups there. We are working on troubleshooting and making the necessary adjustments, but we are moving forward with that, and it seems like it will be a much more streamlined process once everything is all completed. We're completing the fiscal year-end procedures, and we are looking towards our free cash certification process. We are working on our capital improvement plan, and we will be sending out requests to the additional, or excuse me, to the departments, as well as working with the Bagnell Elementary School and some of their outstanding capital projects that we had approved, yet had not gone into the process of being completed. So we will be taking a closer look at that with PRSD, and we are working on our performance evaluations in-house. Lastly, that we are working on our cable equipment and server moves, so hopefully by the next time that you are in this room, all of that equipment over there will be removed, and we will have more space to function in the room. We additionally installed a multimedia TV over in the conference room in the back, so if there is a smaller committee meeting, you'll be able to participate virtually, and you'll also be able to use that as a way to stream those smaller meetings on live TV through the cable network. For the field use and property use and special event department, we approved a vehicle night for August 28th here at Town Hall that's being hosted by the library and the police department. Two important dates to remember, Labor Day is September 2nd, so Town Hall will be closed, and the state election primary is on September 3rd, so Town Hall will be busy. From a procurement standpoint, we issued a notice of proceed and a contract for the removal and replacement of the roof system over at the sewer pump station on Main Street. For community preservation projects, we're working on the Perry Park restoration. We are working to finalize the design, or excuse me, finalize a contract with the designer, and we are working on the skate park at the Pine Recreation Area. There was a slight hiccup with the Geotech report that we received in terms of some of the native soils, but we are working through that, and hopefully we will have a final design shortly. But this may, in fact, cause some scheduling delays from what we originally had proposed moving forward in the fall, so I hope to update you all on that at our next meeting. And then we have started to do more with the community garden proposal, and we have signed a contract with Family Farms to develop a plan for transforming the old dog park into a community garden. And then you'll see below that I provided just a list of all the meetings and events and seminars that I've attended over the last two weeks, and to call attention to a couple of them. At the monthly finance meeting with the PRSD team, we had discussed how we had not finalized our regional agreement. It was something that we put on hold back in November 2023, where some outstanding items had not been reviewed by the working group, and so we have been working on year two without having our regional agreement reviewed and finalized. So the team is looking to get that addressed this year and get something before DESI and on our town meeting warrant. So that's something that I would like to request that the board put on their next agenda, so that we can discuss that in more detail. Also, just to let the board know, the Johnsons Creek Barrier project meeting I had with the MVPC and the MRC, that's the Merrimack River Watershed Council, we had talked about the Salem Street Dam and trying to find additional monies, since we had not yet heard from the dams and seawall folks about whether or not we would be successful in our application for design and permitting. So we are working with the MVPC in collaboration with the MRC to see whether or not we can find another grant that we could potentially utilize to move that project forward. As we see the rainfall events continue in the fashion that they have, and with winter soon approaching, we are very concerned about that particular area and the impact that it could have potentially to the watershed as a whole. So we are working towards other funding sources, but that has led us to look at some of the other culverts and some of the other areas in town that might also benefit from these programs. So we had the MVPC out, and they were surveying the area, and we are going to look and see whether or not there's even a more comprehensive grant through the federal level that would allow us to combat a lot of these different projects all at once. And then lastly, I am working on the Whittier Group. There is a subgroup that was created that focuses more on the finances, and I believe that Select Board Member Watson and Select Board Member Neves have signed up for different subgroups, but I had my subgroup meeting the other day, and essentially, we haven't necessarily made strides towards movement, per se, but we did have an update from the superintendent in regards to their work, that they're moving forward with the Northern Essex Community College, and they're going to be working with the University of Massachusetts Donahue Institute on taking a closer look at that study. And some of the highlights she reported out at that meeting, essentially defining the collective goals and objectives of the new entity, assessing and recommending necessary changes to support the collaborative effort, analyzing regional labor market to align educational programs with industry needs, since this would be a different approach with a technical school and a community college, identifying potential funding sources and strategies, and community interviews and focus groups to share feedback and perspectives. So those are the focuses that they're working on, and as soon as they get more information in terms of that subgroup and just the group as a whole, I'd like to keep the board updated on the project as it moves forward, because it is kind of a very unique situation, and I don't think that there's anything out there that exists like that, so it will be interesting to see how things unfold.
That's a lot. Board members' questions, or anything?
No, this was great. Thank you.
So I just had one question about, whether, call them culverts or dams, it's, don't start. It's where the water goes under the road, and we've had them falling apart. So at one point, we were having to pay for an engineer to come out, but are we still having to do that?
We still have an enforcement order with DCR in regards to the dam, so we are required to do inspections, but right now, since we've made great progress with the flowable fill and getting the structure somewhat stabilized, they've moved our inspections back to every six months. So we are still doing internal inspections more frequently, but the inspections that are being required through the state have, they're not as strict as they were when things were not doing so great with the voids.
Okay. Yes.
I have a question on that, the dam and culvert issue. I know we're looking for a different grant money to be able to...
Hold on for a second, Mike.
Thank you. Sorry, Michael Gobin, 20 Garrison Street. So I know we're looking for grant money to work on those dam and culvert repairs. Would it be possible to, and you would know better than I, acquire a subsidized or a low-interest loan, again, to do those repairs and then use that grant money to pay that loan back in the future, instead of waiting and potentially having a catastrophic event, or just having the repair on the dam become more expensive as damage continues to happen to it? I'm not sure if that's possible, but just a thought.
To my knowledge, I have not heard of a program of that nature. I've heard of programs in which we would be given the monies to repair the structure, and then we would be responsible for finding monies to pay for the project. Most likely, if there was an emergency situation, we could potentially bond for the project, or we could use stabilization, or there would be other means of trying to identify funding for a more emergency-related type of situation, but I've not, in my experience, encountered anything where a grant would fund back the monies that we would receive in order to fix the structure. But there are loans available, low-interest rate loans, that we could look at that would potentially provide us the funding upfront to make the repairs, but we would be ultimately responsible financially to repay that money. There's no program that I'm aware of that would give us that money to then pay that money back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for that comprehensive update. Now, so I put down, you want Kentucky Regional Agreement on our next agenda? Yes? Okay, good. So now we're down to Selectmen Time and Reports. Ed, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Mark? Jason?
Not this weekend.
Becky?
I just noticed on the website, so election season is here, and it looks like early voting for primary election starts on Saturday?
Yep.
So just throwing that out there to remind people.
Something like that? Yep. So I did have a conversation with the Chair of the Groveland Housing Authority. I don't know if anybody remembers, but way back when, Mr. Green, he probably does, there was a plan at one point to add additional housing to our Groveland Housing Authority, which is an affordable 62 and over living community. But then things got kind of sidelined, I think, with the senior center, and then everything went sideways with the housing market, and as a result, the plans that had been drawn up got shelved, and nothing went forward. And so during the conversation, the Chair, Kathleen Prunier, was very agreeable to the Select Board, working with the Housing Authority, to talk about, have discussions about adding additional buildings and housing to that site. And to that end, our town administrator did invite Clara Vargas to come to this meeting, but unfortunately, she was unable to do that, she was busy, but she's very, very open to having a meeting before our next meeting with our town administrator and a member of our Select Board. So I thought that would be good to take advantage of that, and I thought of you, Becky. She's looking at me like, what? Just because it's a new endeavor, and just to, you would meet with Clara and Rebecca, our town administrator, Zoom or otherwise, and just have some discussions.
Sure.
That would be fantastic, and then it can be on our next agenda to bring these discussions out to the public forum to see where everything stands. There was, again, there was a time when they actually had a plan drawn up to put another building in back there, and there potentially ours funding that the town has, that they may have access to. And that would be great, to get all of that out in the open and open for discussions. And that's all I had, except for the fact that it is a super moon and blue moon, which, okay, I think that's pretty neat, though. Look, he agrees with me, the other Jason. I think it's pretty cool. So I'm going to try and enjoy it unless it's thundering and lightning, you know? If I could see it, yes. Our next meeting will not be on a Monday because of the whole Labor Day election thing. We're going to actually meet the next time on Wednesday, September 4th, at 6:30 PM. And that's okay with everyone on the board, right? Because they did it there.
Mm-hmm.
Survey. Okay, great. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.